I am calling the meeting to order of the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee. The first item on the agenda is public comment on any matter not on the agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to make introductions of the committee members. Here is Supervisor Jerry Bullock. I'm Supervisor Mary Colar, the Chair. Supervisor Dennis O'Laughlin. We may or may not be joined by Supervisors Patrick Miles and El Matano. We also have with us our Youth Governance Member, Sam Fisher. Staff here tonight are Zoning Administrator Roger Lane, our Senior Planner Majid Allen, and Senior Planner Pam Andros. And our Assistant Zoning Administrator Dan Iverson is also here, and he'll be back shortly. Okay, I'm just going to go over the rules, the guidance that we follow during our meetings. The committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out one of these white forms. If you wish to speak on a petition and you haven't filled out one of these white forms, please do so, and you can give it to Roger. Okay, when a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to this desk up here and have a seat. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and the reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of the registrants is as follows: After the petitioner or agent, any persons wishing to speak in favor; then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given an additional three minutes. All speakers will address the committee, the members up here. There won't be a running debate between the petitioner and anyone in opposition, for example. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for the towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to the meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the committee. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's actions has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the full county board. If the committee passes a petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend the county board meeting. Committee action on a conditional use permit is a final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the county board. The petitions which are recommended for approval will be placed on the April 12th County Board Agenda. The next CLR committee meeting is on April 10th. First petition this evening is rezone petition 11,252 Lennox Landscape and Supply in the Town of Albion. Come up here, please. If you could state your name and your address and the reason for your petition.
Alex Barkley, Rock Road Companies, 601 West Street, Stowe, Wisconsin. Looking to rezone parcel for, and head it to have a conditional use permit for concrete batch plant.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm just starting to start just playing what we're planning on doing.
Probably good enough for now. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The Town of Albion has approved the rezoning petition to a two-parent floor and has approved the conditional use permit for a temporary concrete batch plant with 19 conditions.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition with the town and staff conditions, provided you're okay with all the conditions.
Yep, we're okay with the conditions.
Rezone first. You're doing the rezone.
Rezone first, yes.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the rezone discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the rezone is approved.
I'll make a second motion to approve the CUP with the conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve the CUP discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Okay? Next is rezone petition 11,254 Robert Johnson in the Town of Christiana.
Hi, I'm Jim Lowery. I'm acting as Agent for Bob Johnson. I live at 2316 Birdview Hemi Road, Town of Christiana. Bob would like to rezone two acres from an A2 parcel and add it to the C2 parcel that he has presently on the Highway 12 and 18 corridor. I got a note from, or a message from Majid that the county was a little concerned because the village had it in their long-term plan to extend Rodney Road across that farm to Highway PQ, and also that the DOT was going to straighten out Rodney Road from the current pattern that it follows right now. I met with the village of Cambridge on the 13th and got unanimous approval. I did bring up the points that Majid had brought up to me. They have no plans to extend that road. It's owned privately, it's a farm, and they said they don't see anything happening in the future. I also spoke with Scott Hinkle, who was with the DOT. DOT has no plans of changing that intersection at this point. The reason they had talked about it a couple of years ago was property to the northeast that is now the winery down there had talked about bringing the road out to 12 and 18, and DOT said if they did, they would have to bring it out up by where that acreage is that we want to add to the C2, and he said they aren't going to do that. That would be up to the developer of that property.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I think I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The Town of Christiana has approved this petition. Staff is suggesting that two conditions be placed on this rezoning. The first one, to deed restrict the C2 property to limit the uses exclusively to trailer sales business and single-family residence, and also place a deed restricting prohibiting the installation of off-premise advertising signs or billboards.
We're good with that.
We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
Next is rezone petition 11,255. It's Nancy Coffey Trust in the Town of Roxbury.
David Haas, address 7776 Edelman Road, Sock City, 53583. Petition request, rezone from RH1 to A2, reason shifting of property lines between adjacent landowners.
David Haas, 7786 Edelman Road. Petition for rezoning from RH1 to A2, reason shifting of property lines between adjacent landowners.
Anything else you want to add? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The Town of Roxbury has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is concerned with regards to the oversized lots. Staff is suggesting that a deed restriction be placed on this property to prohibit further land divisions.
Are you fine with the deed restriction?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve this with deed restriction.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the deed restriction. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. You're welcome. Next is rezone petition 11,256 Angela Miley in the Town of Mazo Mani.
Hi. I'm Angela Miley for 9559 County Road Y in Mazo Mani, looking to rezone to a C1 for purchase of sale to Megan. Basically, Megan will explain her business a little bit to you on what she'd like to do out there.
Yeah, so I'm Megan Zetloff Meyer, and hoping to purchase this property for a family business to move into Dane County. And the business is currently in Tremblow County in Wisconsin, and it was started by my parents in 1998, and it's a business that produces organic tinctures and botanicals for livestock. So the business is very low impact on the surrounding area, and it's also mostly mail orders, so there's not a lot of customers in and out. And it's a very green business as well. It's all, the byproducts can be composted and returned to the earth, and we recycle, so there's a very small imprint in that way. And it would also employ like three to five part-time employees, which it would be a working wage, and it would also bring in people from other areas. The business is set up to have dealers and distributors, which are around the U.S., so it could also boost Mazo Mani's economy in that way with bringing people in. So there also would not be any extra demands for electricity or water than a typical home.
And traffic would only be like UPS, FedEx, your smaller shipping, not, no semis.
Anything else you'd like to add?
That's about all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The Town of Mazo Mani has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is concerned that this is a single-family house and is being used for commercial uses. The applicant has not submitted a conditional use permit application in order to address the residential use on the property. In C1 zoning district, the residential use is prohibited unless it has a conditional use permit. Staff would suggest that the applicant, in order to resolve the issue with the nonconforming residents, staff is suggesting that a conditional use permit application be submitted within 10 days.
And we typically have a rezone and a CUP on our agenda. How do you feel about, should we or not?
We have been in conversations, and we told the applicant that needed a rezoning plus the conditional use permit application, but the applicant has chosen just to submit the rezoning application at this time.
You have a question?
Yeah. Go ahead. Why didn't we submit the conditional use permit application?
Well, because if the property is not rezoned, we will not be buying it, so I did not want to pay the extra $500 or $600 for the conditional use permit if we weren't going to get the property.
That makes sense.
And we're also not planning to live there, so really the main reason we're buying this property is for the business. So the residence, I mean, at this point is an office for the business.
The residence is an office?
Well, it would serve as an office at this point, but we do, I mean, eventually if we get it rezoned and get the property, we do plan to do a conditional use permit. But since it's not ours, and it's a big investment to do the CUP as well, we chose to wait and get the zoning in order. And we have time before we take over the business.
Well, I can relate to what you're saying, truly. I'd like to ask staff, Roger, do you have any heartburn with approving this without the CUP? Or can we make it conditioned upon a CUP being done?
I believe it'd be acceptable to recommend approval of the rezoning petition, but this is a single-family house, and it just has a large garage. And in asking the applicant what they were going to do with this, they stated that it was going to be used for VBRO. That would be in our land use classification, it falls under motel, so a conditional use permit would be needed to either use it as a single-family residence or any type of residential component. So I think the Town of Mazo Mani would want to weigh in, as well as the neighboring property owners would want to weigh in on what is going to be common with the residential portion of that building. So I think it would be acceptable to make the rezoning conditioned upon a conditional use permit being applied for.
Yeah, acceptable to the Town of Mazo Mani, to the Town. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, so that would be that the zoning essentially is approved as long as...
In pencil, in pencil.
In pencil.
You have 10 days to file for your CUP.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, then I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to approve this conditioned upon a CUP application within 60 days.
60 days.
60 days?
60 days, good for you. Yeah. Yeah.
And the town has approved it with no conditions?
The reason.
Excuse me, the re, yeah.
I just wanted to...
Okay, so that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezone with the condition of a CUP will be filed within the next 60 days.
Make sure you get that in.
Yeah, I will.
Because that, it'll negate the rezone.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't wait your 60 days.
No, I won't.
Further discussion? Yes, Supervisor El Matano.
I just have a map question. Roger, is the western border, is that a rail corridor? That diagonal?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Don't give these jobs to chimps either.
Anything else? Okay, the motion to approve the rezone with the condition of needing to file the CUP. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved with that condition.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is rezone petition 11,257 Gene and Judy Lawber in the Town of Cross Plains.
My wife couldn't make it tonight. I live at 3795 Garford Road in Monmore, Wisconsin. We'd like to rezone five acres for someone to build a house.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The Town of Cross Plains has approved this petition with no conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Okay, thanks for coming down.
All right, thank you.
Next is rezone petition 11,258 Richard Anderson in the Town of Vermont.
I'm Richard Anderson, and this is my wife Kelly. So it's pretty simple. We're separating the homestead site from the rest of the land so we can maintain agriculture on the rest of the land.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
The Town of Vermont has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. You're welcome. Yeah, I don't have 11,259 or 260.
That's 262, isn't it?
Yeah, 262. So you still don't have...
I haven't seen these last two hurt.
Okay, just to get anyone here for 11,259, 11,260, 11,261? Did you fill out a form?
No, I can't fill out a form yet.
Oh, come on up and talk, and we'll make sure to get your form. Okay, your rezone 11,261, just tell who you are, where you live, and what you want to do.
My name is Ryan Kradke, 1242 State Road 73, Edgerton, Wisconsin, 53534. Looking to rezone five acres from A1 to a C1, out in all the surrounding area, and then also looking at a conditional use permit to bring our family winery out of Jefferson over to Albion, along with a brewery, to basically grow the products we brew right there.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The Town of Albion has approved this petition with some conditions, and there's also some staff conditions with the rezoning. The rezoning having a deed restriction for the C1 zone parcel, limited to commercial uses exclusively to wine and beer production facilities, tasting room, taverns, retail sales of products produced on the premises, and also hours of operation at the tasting room to be from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Tuesdays through Sunday. Also a deed restriction prohibiting the installation of billboard signs on the property.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning with the town and staff conditions. You okay with that? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezone with staff and town conditions. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved for the rezone.
Now I'll make a motion to approve your CUP with the conditions.
Seven conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve the CUP with the seven conditions. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Okay, and, yeah.
Can I fill it in?
Sure. And you can put the rezone and the CUP on the same form.
Very good.
Thank you. Next is rezone 11,262 Helen Jagi and Winstonsall, Town of Montrose.
Wade Wise, Wise Engineering, representing Addison Metropolitan School District, the potential buyer of the 14 and a half acre parcel. Request before you is generally a creation of a 14 and a half acre parcel that the Yagi Wise and Sauls have elected to sell to the district. The domino effect there of creating that is a rezone of that property in discussions with the town and the county to recreational land use. And the resultant of the CSM, the land division that's accompanying this, is creation or expansion of an existing lot to an A1 exclusive, and then the creation of a five, not the creation, but the downsizing of an existing residential zone, lot to a five-acre lot, so the end product is still the same density. But creating the 14 and a half acre parcel and the associated zone is a result of the request tonight.
Anything else? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The Town of Montrose has approved this petition with several conditions. Deed restriction shall be recorded on the A1 exclusive lot and the RE recreational lot to prohibit residential development. The housing density rights have been exhausted on the original farm. Any driveway shall meet the town requirements regarding slope, stormwater, and width, and also the existing driveway shall be relocated approximately 80 feet north along Fritz Road.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve with the kind of, your neighbor to the northwest came in earlier and very satisfied with what you're doing, thought it was very good. So he came all the way up here, and I said, well, do you want to sit here through the whole thing? And no, I said, okay.
I've tried him very correctly.
So I'll make a motion with those conditions, as reported by Roger from the Town.
Second.
And the county.
Oh, yes, yes. Staff, yes.
On the rezone with the town and staff conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. You're welcome. Okay, next we have rezone 11,263 Tom and Donna Sayer Farms, Town of Pleasant Springs. Yeah, you're up here. And you actually have two rezones.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead. You want to tell us about?
We're just using the density rights to locate within this patch of woods to go from ag to be able to build a single-family housing.
Anything else?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger, do you want to go ahead and, anyway, if you want to tell us about both at the same time or one each?
The Town of Pleasant Springs has approved this petition with conditions that deed restrict the RH2 parcel to no further residential development. Certified survey map is required to be created for the RH2 parcel. CSM is to capture the driveway that has been approved by the town, and the CSM shall be recorded or the zoning becomes null and void. Staff has recommended that the applicant depict the building envelope area outside the 12% and greater slopes.
And that's on rezone 11,263?
That is correct.
I'm going to approve with the town conditions and staff conditions. You're okay with that?
I am to, so get the survey map, and that has to have building envelope on it?
Okay. Is that a problem?
No, I'm just new to this. I didn't know my survey was geography or not, so I mean, that's...
So is it workable for you to build off the 12?
It is, yeah. There's quite a bit that's not 12, so it shouldn't be fine, but...
That's good.
Yeah. But how do I define that on a CSM?
He will.
He will, okay, thank you.
Good. Did I hear?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve rezone 263, 11,263. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and that rezone is approved. Next is rezone 11,264.
Yes, ma'am, there is a lot right there, again, all wooded, less than 12% slope, but another, going from agricultural only to a residential, and because of the future potential that the owner may be interested in selling off some ag land, we're for an ag zoning on this versus just a, or a RH one for future.
Okay.
Currently just looking for a single-family home on there. There's no buildings, no on there currently. There's no buildings, no on there currently.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Pleasant Springs has approved this petition with conditions deed restriction be placed on the new residential parcel to prohibit further residential development. Certified survey map will need to be created in order to complete the rezoning. Also, the certified survey map shall designate the location of the driveway. And also staff would suggest that the balance of the A1 exclusive zone land owned by the applicant have a deed restriction be placed on it to prohibit further non-farm development in accordance with the town density policies.
Sir, are you okay with those conditions?
I am, yes.
Then I'll make a motion to approve with the town and staff conditions. Second. When it was second?
Pick one. On the motion to approve, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Got a lot of work to do now.
Yeah. Next is rezone 11,267, Scott Colshaw in the town of Oregon.
Good evening. My name is Gary Carles. I'm with Quality West Construction Company in Monarch. I reside at 10795 North Prairie Rowent, Blue Mountains, 53517. And I'm the agent slash builder for Scott and Jackie Colshaw. And we're asking to rezone 2,210 square feet of a wetland area along the road right away to obtain a drive, to install a driveway in an existing A2 lot. We contracted Quam Engineering to engineer the driveway to work it in around the least amount of wetland possible that, so we impact the smallest portion of it. It is a wetland area all the way across the road right away, so there's no other place to put the driveway without going through that part of it. We contracted Cardinal Engineering, soils engineering company here from Addison that did a complete soils analysis. And they also helped us obtain approval from the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineer. And we also had our archaeological study completed and accepted. And we're, you know, just looking to install a driveway to get to an existing lot so we can construct their home.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Staff has found no significant impact on the functional values of this very small wetland area. It's basically the bottom of the cup of the surrounding area. Staff is suggesting one condition, that the landowner will obtain a shore land erosion control permit prior to the start of any land disturbing activity in this area.
I'm going to make a motion to approve that condition, but I see he already has the condition in his hand. Oh, so you're going to give that to Roger?
Did they send that to you, Jim Edgar?
I'm sure Hans says it.
Question for staff. How do you qualify to change a wetland parcel to non?
How do you change that?
Yeah, how do you change that? I mean, how does, what does the process involve?
Basically, the county board has adopted the DNR wetland maps. And if an area is identified as a wetland, it is included in that DNR wetland inventory map. In order to develop in that, it needs to be classified from a wetland designated area to a non-wetland area. There are examples such as this, that it is, it has been a wet area for a very long time, so it has indicators of wetlands. And if there is some types of vegetation growing there that is an indicator of wetland, it is a wetland. So you can see that it's a very small area. It's, in that portion of Oregon, it's quite flat. And the water has to settle somewhere. And that unfortunately is the place, right beside the road. This was rezoned to residential housing quite a few years ago. And we really didn't see that that was an issue. It really didn't show up. But as, when it starts to develop, that's when, you know, it's raw land, these things come out.
Okay.
We had suggested to have a joint driveway. But the town does not want joint driveways. They want an individual driveway. So. Kind of stuck.
This, yeah. This sort of reminds me of the floodplain maps. And there are many, many maps that are, A, not correct. And you have to go out and do what you did, get all those people that you're talking about to review it. And then a decision is made that we can not allocate that term floodplain in this particular parcel. So it's good you did all that work and it's obvious that I think it's a smart thing to do. So you're quite confident that this is not going to be a problem for the county when they build?
We are, yes. It's right at the egress of where we come in off the road. I have the town approval, we have the town driveway permit, they didn't have a concern with it. Long story short, when our customer purchased the property, before he bought it, we did check with the Dane County map and it didn't show it was wetland. So went ahead and closed on the property and we got the driveway permit, had the town approval, we went for the Dane County Water Resources Stormwater Management Plan. And then they questioned it and submitted it to the DNR, but then the DNR got involved and wanted us to have a study done. And that's when we contracted Cardinal. So eight months later and quite a bit of money, we're at this level.
Soil, you did soil borings then, or?
Yeah, Cardinal did multiple soil borings. And then you find the exact wetland area. And I don't, it doesn't really show on that map. But if, if, I'm just going to kind of do a little hand diagram. If this is the road and our driveway's coming in this way, the wetland comes like this, curves down around and comes back up. So we put our driveway in at the least, at the smallest area, then dog leg over to get to the high ground and then go back into the building site. So it's 2,100 and, or 2,210 square feet of wetland area that we have to cross before we, and we're still in wet soil beyond that point, but it's not defined as wetland after that point.
So I'm just, I'm familiar with that parcel, that's why I'm asking all the questions.
Okay. Yeah, there's, and I think there's a hardpan layer that the water doesn't drain in that corner. It's been farmed for years, but this time of year, water does sit in there.
So did you increase the elevation of the house then?
Uh, the house is set way back. The house is set back as far as what the neighboring house is, about 13, 1400 feet back off the road. So it's just the first part of the driveway that we have to get in to get up to the high ground. And then the driveway will run parallel to the neighbor's driveway going back to the south.
Thanks for satisfying my curiosity.
You're more than welcome.
Did you, I'll make a motion to approve this petition.
And I'll second that.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. Is there anyone here that didn't fill out a white form and therefore I haven't called on you even though you had a petition before us that we haven't heard from before? Okay. Because including town of Cottage Grove, are you going to do that?
I'm representing town of Cottage Grove.
You're going to do that, fair enough.
It's a blanket rezone.
Okay.
I put their application together. So I would say this is a blanket rezone that results from their latest amendment to their land use plan or their land use map portion of their comprehensive plan. And in that, you know, they added some, took a little land out of exclusive zoning, added some areas, and it came down to just these few parcels that actually need to be rezoned. Most of them were already in a residential zoning district. And so we didn't have to change too many, but these are the remaining. And as you can see, three of them are already residential parcels that needed to be rezoned anyway, so.
Anything? Any other staff want to add anything?
Yes.
Yes. Any other staff comments? This little.
It's a little.
Oh, yeah. The town of Cottage Grove has approved this petition with no conditions.
I move approval.
There we go.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
For House TK? I, would you entertain a motion to postpone the two rezones? There was no application yet?
Yeah, do you have the number since your?
11,259. And 11,260.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
I was just going to give another opportunity in case anybody's. I know, Nikki's up here. And who was the name on that one?
Number one is Linda Sweeney.
Linda Sweeney? Okay. All right, we have a motion postpone the two rezones due to the petitioner's not being here. Was there a second?
Aye.
One second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the postponement of those two rezones say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And those two are postponed. Thank you. Okay. Next are zoning map amendments and conditional use permits from previous meetings. We have CUP 2396. We have had public hearing before, but before us tonight, we have Mr. O'Callahan, the attorney for AT&amp;T. And Jim Germain. Jim, you're with AT&amp;T also?
Yes, that's correct, ma'am.
And Michael Capetti.
Hi, Capetti, yeah, thank you.
And you're also AT&amp;T?
SACM, yeah, AT&amp;T.
Okay. If you would just stand by, it will be up to members if they want to ask you questions. So first opportunity on petitions from previous meetings is for the staff update, please.
Sure. So you have in your packet a tremendous dirt, or wealth of information, I should say, probably more than you care to review. But I'll just try to provide a brief summary and then, of course, available to answer any questions you may have. So, public hearing was first held on this petition back in October of 2017. At that time, the committee postponed action. We hadn't heard from the town. There was quote unquote "new" information presented at the hearing regarding the intent or purpose for, or dual intent or purpose for the proposed tower. After that, we had a meeting in November at which we postponed again to provide time for the town to take action, for the county's third-party engineer to review the proposal and report back. And lo and behold, here we are in late March. In between that time, there'd been various meetings and discussions between staff and the applicants. And most recently, we had planned to schedule this for the March 13th work meeting, but at AT&amp;T's request, a conference call was held with, between AT&amp;T engineers and the county engineer, county staff was part of that discussion as well. There were some concerns expressed in, by AT&amp;T with regards to information that was in the consultant's report. The consultant's report is recommending they do not support the proposal, find that it doesn't meet the county ordinance standards. And so I'll give you a brief update that's presented in here. We had the discussion, it was March 13th, or excuse me, March 9th, I believe. And, you know, AT&amp;T had asked that Citiescape update its report to address a number of things, including that, to say that AT&amp;T has demonstrated the need for a cellular tower for cell service in this area. Citiescape said, listen, we don't have an issue with that. I think that was demonstrated back in 2013 where, and I'll point it out here, this is actually was never built, but they were granted approval for a tower here on a quarry site in town of Oregon. And in that report, findings were very clear that they have demonstrated a need for cellular service in that area. Again, so they made no change to the report, they stood by their technical findings. County staff have a number of problems with this proposal, I'm happy to detail those. Although if you want to, again, it's up to the committee as to whether or not you want to give them the opportunity to address some of the issues in the engineer's report. So I defer to your judgment if you'd like me to go over our recommendation, which is to deny the conditional use permit for a number of reasons. I'm happy to do that now or to withhold that until the committee has discussed the matter.
I'd like to hear them.
Okay. So, let me give you a, and I'll try and do this briefly. And I may just read right from my summary because I thought this thing has had such a long history that would be helpful to understand, how did we get to where we are? And if it would be helpful at some point, I'm also happy to go through a timeline of events to explain things. So I provide, there's two objectives for this tower. One is to provide broadband internet service, what we call fixed wireless internet service to, to this blue area here. So AT&amp;T has received federal funding that's designed to encourage the deployment of broadband internet service in rural areas throughout the country. And this blue area happens, this is the area where they're targeting, and it's actually north of this yellow line, which is in town of Dunn. So that's one of the objectives they have. The other is to fulfill, and this is not shown so much on the map here, a cellular gap along County Highway MM to the west. So they've got these two dual objectives. One, trying to provide the internet service to the north and east in the town of Dunn, and the cellular service to the west in town of Oregon. So, again, I'm just going to read from this because I have so many things I could tell you, I don't want to jumble it up because I'm obviously a lot more familiar with this proposal than you are. So, as I said, it's intended to provide two, accomplish two objectives. AT&amp;T had received this FCC Connect America Fund II funding, designed to extend high-speed internet access to underserved areas of the country, including the blue area in town of Dunn in Rutland. And, again, that is without a doubt a very well-defined need. If you've followed any of the news reports over the years, especially in the, there's a little label up there for underserved subdivisions in town of Dunn. Folks that live within literally eye shot of the Capitol not having internet access, obviously a frustrating situation in the second-largest county in the state to be in that predicament, given how it's really a much-needed utility these days. So, one of the concerns staff has had with this proposal since we were made well aware, the initial application had a very small provision in there saying, yeah, we're trying to do this broadband internet service. When we dug down and asked, all right, what is this about? What's the intent? How do you intend to provide it? One of the concerns we had initially, and this is depicted on the map, that little red dot there represents where they're trying to build the tower. And this blue area, you know, roughly, you know, three to five miles to the north and east is where they're trying to get the service. It's an awful far ways away. And you've got existing towers right smack dab in the middle of that blue area. To the layperson's eye suggests, boy, if you're designing this system, how do you best provide this service in the area of need? You would utilize those existing facilities. And we've been asking for this information, you know, look at designing a system that's based on. based on utilizing existing facilities, which the county ordinance is, you know, designed to accomplish. The, one of the things that we've received, and again, were a number of shifting rationales for why this particular site was selected. In October, and this was right around the time of the public hearing, we had a letter from an AT&amp;T engineer indicating that the location that they selected is required, you know, because it's, or, excuse me, it was chosen to best cover the underserved communities, meaning this blue area, and also trying to maximize the service provision within that blue area. Since that time, we've been asking them, okay, so how many folks are you going to be serving? And what we've heard to date is, well, if we don't build this tower, 35 to 40 households, dwelling units, would not have access to the service. We don't know where those households are, I'm assuming they're in the town of Dunn since that's where they're stating they're trying to provide the service. I had our GIS specialist do a little reverse engineering to give me a sense of, you know, where those households might be located within the blue area. And one thing I also want to point out, at the October public hearing, Supervisor Miles asked, and this is his area, town of Dunn, and so obviously has invested interest in the outcome of this, he asks, you know, what is generally the radius of the service area for the broadband? And I believe it was Mr. Germain, it indicated it's, you know, roughly two to three miles. Well, when we did the, a little GIS analysis on this site, there are no dwelling units that are located within the town of Dunn within a two-to-three mile distance of this site. You have to go out four miles before you hit 40 households. Now, again, I'm not the engineer, I don't know, perhaps something had changed, but this was a concern that our, the county's third-party engineer expressed, that the frequencies at which this signal is being, you know, beamed is not as far as you would get with traditional cellular service. And I, you know, the details are in the technical report. So, again, this seemed to reinforce the concerns that staff had, that the naked eye can see that you're really far away from where you're trying to get this service, it just doesn't add up. We'd asked them to look at the sites at highway 138, that's the one that's smack dab in the middle of the blue area there, and we're told, well, it's not going to work with the system they've designed, you know, the engineers said there's things they can do with something called beam tilting. We asked them that question during this conference call, frankly, they didn't get a very, didn't get any answer to that. You know, so this is the big issue we have, frankly, with this site. There's, it's in the shadow of a subdivision of roughly 20 lots, it's just a poor location. I don't know, do we have the search ring map on here? So, this map shows the search ring that the company provided us at the time they submitted. Actually, that might be a second one, there were two. First, we were given, I believe, a quarter-mile search ring, and then a half-mile search ring, that frankly, were centered on the site that they were originally proved for back in 2013, 14. So, as you can see, the site labeled with the little pushpin there is well outside of the search ring. We were told in some supplemental materials provided back in December that, well, you know, they couldn't find any willing landowners within the search ring, and then the engineers went back to the drawing table and kept moving things further to the east. The Martinson site has been in place since November of 2016. I have an engineer's letter from August of 17, when the application was submitted, saying, listen, here's the search ring, we're the engineers, this is what we provided, and we realize this is outside of the search ring, but we couldn't find any viable candidates, and this is what we're going with. Fast forward to December 2017, a few months later, and suddenly, well, now there's a new search ring that shows it being, you know, the Martinson site within the search ring. These things just simply do not add up. Can't have a landowner signing a letter saying, I'm willing to move forward with this site in November of 16, and then tell us as late as October, November, even into December, which frankly, it wasn't until December 20th, and I, you'll have to dig in your packets to see this, but they gave us another thing, doesn't look like a ring, but it's around the Martinson site. So, it, you know, this was part of the frustration, I think, and the issue that the third-party consultant had was, how do we analyze this? We don't know where you're trying to site this thing. Again, shifting information, and it just, like I said, it doesn't add up. And we have the documents to demonstrate that appears to be fabricating. And, so, as I said, we take very seriously this issue of rural broadband. We want to see that happen. What we would hate to see happen is approving a site that says, yeah, we're bringing it, and then the goods don't come. Now, I've been very honest with these folks, and believe me, if they came to us with a better site that more clearly was designed to provide the broadband service, we'd be rolling out the red carpet. That simply has not been the case. I've reached out to town of Dunn, they've been in communication with the AT&amp;T reps as well, they know full well that the service is needed, and, but have not received assurances that in fact it's going to be provided if this site is approved. So, again, in a very big nutshell, that is the big concern that we have with the broadband aspect of this proposal. There's been no search ring for broadband that's been provided with the application. And again, if you think of cellular network as this overli, you know, it's a network, things have to fit together like a puzzle. We totally appreciate that, we understand it, it's well-known. The engineers understand that, and what we haven't seen for the broadband is how these things are fitting together. It's as though, you know, this is a target of opportunity, they need a cellular site, and if we can pick off a few houses with broadband, well, let's move it over here, and we'll try and do that. And, you know, you've seen in the letters that you've received from them that, well, state law says we can't look at this, state law says you can't look at that, and frankly, I would beg to differ, when it comes to the provision of the broadband service, we cannot consider that, at least according to our corporation counsel, what's considered a mobile service under the definition which references the federal code in fact. So, here we are, the county staff have recommended denial for a variety of reasons. I will go over them briefly. So, as detailed in the engineering report, applicant has failed to substantiate the need for a tower at the proposed location on the objectives that are stated in the application materials. Proposed site is located outside of the search ring that was submitted with the application, and the applicant has provided conflicting and contradictory information regarding the identification of search rings. They failed to submit a search ring documenting the need for the tower at the proposed location to provide rural broadband internet services, failed to adequately document the area eligible to receive such services, and failed to adequately evaluate the feasibility of co-location on an existing tower within the federally designated broadband target area. Proposed is also inconsistent with the town and county conference plan. Town plan policies seek to prevent the establishment of new incompatible non-residential land uses, near residential subdivisions, and also seek to preserve farmland and rural character. In addition, this violates the town density policy regarding splits, the property is not eligible for any additional splits. So, staff is recommending, based on findings of fact, that the request fails to meet standards two and six, and 10.2552H, and also standard B under section 10.1235, as for standards of conditional use permits in the U1 exclusive district. So, again, I'm happy to answer questions, go through the timeline if you have them.
I don't have any questions. Supervisor Loffler?
Your reasons for recommendation, have they been expressed to these customers?
Oh, yes. Like I said, we've met with them and...
And what is their response to you about these recommendations?
Well, a couple of, they'll defend this site, saying that, listen, this serves the two objectives that they have. If they, we've heard that, well, we don't want to use the site on 138, the existing tower, because it would be economically burdensome to them to cite their equipment for the broadband service on that tower. We've also been told that, well, listen, you know, you can't evaluate the proposal based on what you think might be a better way to design this system, you're prohibited from doing that by the state statutes. And again, we respectfully disagree with that, again, when it comes to the broadband, you know, if this were a cellular issue, and that was the argument we were making, I would say, yeah, you got us, that's what the state law says. But in this case, and again, we take very seriously the need for rural broadband. And, as I said, the big concern we have is that this is, you know, you might say it's trying to kill two birds with one stone, but it's wounding them at best. The engineer, the county, the third-party engineers noted that by moving it further to the east, they're not providing as good a coverage to the west for the cellular service. Frankly, we haven't really seen the goods. There are a total of 142 dwelling units in the town of Dunn in that blue area on the map, okay? And so, we're catching 35 to 40 of them supposedly with this site, and that's, again, the engineering, the frequencies at which they're operating, and Mr. Germain said it at the October meeting, is roughly two to three miles distance.
Period, that's as far as it goes.
That's our understanding, this was a concern that our engineers expressed as well, that those higher frequencies, they don't travel as far as you would for cellular. So, like I said, when we did our analysis, and you go out, you have to go four miles before you hit 40 households. Even three and a half miles, you only get four households in the town of Dunn. So, the other response we had received was, well, listen, you know, our obligation under the federal funding that they're receiving is a statewide obligation, not a county-by-county one, so you know what, eh, we get a few here, we get a few there, maybe we do more up in a different county elsewhere, but in the end scheme, it's an aggregate, it's not the 912 that they've identified here in Dane County, which, within that blue area on this portion of the target area, there's about 400 and some, so roughly, you know, approaching half of their total target. But, we have no idea what the breakdown is, are they going to do all 912? Are they picking up others in other parts of the state to meet their overall obligation? But at the end of the day, again, the issue with this is, is, you know, it just, it's not adding up. And we have concerns about accepting an application where then, months after the fact, we're told, oh, no, no, that's not the information you should be looking at, you should be looking at this stuff, and oh, it conveniently squares with what we're trying to accomplish, when we have evidence, documents that they themselves have submitted that are contradicted. It just, like I said, these things aren't adding up.
Anybody want to respond to some of this?
Yes, we definitely do. And I've got a few comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dan. And some of these, Mr. Allen has already addressed, but first off, let me thank you for taking the time. I recognize that this application is probably more complicated than some of the other ones you've seen in the past. And some of that complexity, as Mr. Allen has indicated, is due to the fact that we are trying to serve some broadband customers. I think if we came to you with just a mobile coverage need, we wouldn't even be having this discussion.
Correct.
But, and maybe shame on us for trying to do that, but we did, and we can't change that. That is part of our goal. And I suspect for Madam Chair, Mr. Vogg, and Mr. Matone, this is probably, in the words of Yogi Berra, this is like deja vu all over again. You know, you approved this back in 2013, and I suspect when you did that, you probably didn't think we'd be coming back to you in 2018, asking for you to approve the very same mobile coverage area. But that's exactly what we're doing. And it might be worthwhile to kind of talk about what's changed over the last four years, and what hasn't changed, for that matter. Now, when we take a look at what's changed, Mr. Allen had talked about the CAF 2 program, and that is true. That actually came out, technically, the rules were released in December of 2014, in 2015, AT&amp;T accepted the federal funding. It's a really good sequel. There was an earlier program called CAF 1, this is CAF 2. And this program is bringing nearly $900 million into Wisconsin to build out broadband. So, that is something that has changed. But what are some of the things that haven't changed since you made that decision back in 2013? Well, one of which is the need, and I think Mr. Allen correctly noted it in his comments, nobody that has reviewed this application is disputing the mobile coverage need. That need is still there, and in fact, I will quote from the Citiescape report, and in it, they talk about, well, let me get to that in a minute. The other thing that hasn't changed is the availability of towers. There is no tower within any one of the three search rings, and I will admit that we have caused confusion with regard to the search rings, and we have attempted to resolve that in our December narrative. But the fact of the matter is, if you look at any one of the three, the original one you used to approve the tower back in 2013, or any of the subsequent ones, there is no tower we can use to serve that mobile coverage need. And I think frankly, that in itself is why Citiescape in its September 17th, or September 19th, 2017 report said, and I quote, "No existing towers exist within the search area." Quote, "Citiescape has confirmed this. For this reason, AT&amp;T has demonstrated the need for a new facility in the area and has justified an antenna height of 199 feet with the provided coverage map depicting the improved area to provide, be provided by the proposed site." So, Citiescape in its September report said this tower is needed. Now, it's easy to dismiss that as an initial report, but frankly, on that report, I didn't see anything that was suggesting it was initial. So, now, if we fast forward to the February 27th report, we get a complete 180. Now, they're saying that they cannot support it, and they basically say, although ironically, in that report, on the third line of page two, in response to the statement, "No existing towers exist within the search area," which again, in that September report, was the criteria where they said this tower was justified. Citiescape responds, "None exist." So, we have established in both reports that no tower exists where we could co-locate within that search ring. The other thing that I think is very interesting is the complete void of the acknowledgement of the need for the mobile coverage area. And I asked them about that. In our March 9th meeting, I said, "In your September report, you stated," and I quote, "The existing service along highway MM is weak and unreliable outdoors." But the current report is completely void of that. So, now, I got the question, okay, well, what would have happened between September and February to cause this dramatic shift? Could it be the fact that a new tower was built in the search area? Well, obviously, we'd confirm that based on their own study, that there is no tower. And then the other question is, has the need changed? Has that been eliminated? Well, frankly, I would argue that the need's actually increased, and it's increased since the time that you approved it back in 2013. Why? Greater demand for cellular service, more people are eliminating their landline in favor of wireless communications. But even probably more important is the fact that in December, the state of Wisconsin chose to opt into the first net network. Now, if you're familiar with that, that's a national network intended to try and establish communications with first responders. And AT&amp;T was the sole awardee of that national contract to build out this network. This tower now becomes part of that important need to establish communication amongst first responders. So, now we've got an established need, and again, I don't think anybody's questioning that mobile coverage need, and we've got the existence of no towers in that search ring. But there's a couple of other things I'd point out in the Citiescape report that's kind of interesting. And let me just hook to that, I apologize here. In the report, they state... In the report, they state, they say, on Page Seven, within the conclusions, they say, and I quote, "The viability of an alternate location on the Martinson property should be investigated." Now, this is a particular, a peculiar recommendation, because at the response, or the request of staff, AT&amp;T did that very thing. We actually took a look at moving the tower to the east along the northern property border. The owner, Mr. Martinson, said he did not want that. We also took a look at moving it to the southeast corner of the property along Highway A. Now, that, he was actually said he could probably work with, but when we started to evaluate the elevations, it drops off some 20-some feet, and we would have had to construct a taller tower. That information was documented in a letter supplied on February 19th, eight days before the report. Yet, in its report, Cityscape is saying, folks, you might want to take a look at moving it on the property. Now, that's one point, but there's more to go along with that. It says, later in the report, on Page Eight, it says, "At a minimum, this should include an estimate of the number of households within the CAP-2 area would be, would become eligible for broadband service as a result of the installation of the proposed tower." That, too, was included in the February 19th report, or a letter. We identified the impact that we saw that this tower would not be built. 35 to 40 customers, we believe, would not have access to broadband if this tower's not built. Yet, Cityscape, eight days later, says, "You should really give us the number of people." I don't get it. Now, here's the one that really I find is most troubling, and that is on Page Seven of the report. Cityscape states, and I quote, "The applicant has not commented on whether co-location on the existing SBA-owned tower located on State Highway 138, shown in Figure Three as WIL 05625," putting aside that that's actually wrong, the nomenclature, "would meet the requirements and not require construction of a new tower." Now, this, as I mentioned, is particularly troubling, because in response to staff's request in January, AT&amp;T did a thorough analysis of that co-location site and determined, including propagation maps and elevation analysis, that that site was not suitable to meet the needs for not only the mobile coverage, too far away, but also it negatively impacts the CAP-2 area. Yet, in its report, Cityscape is recommending that we, or actually stating that we have not evaluated that. I don't know what's happened there. We shared that information with the Dane County staff during an in-person meeting on February 5th. You figure it out. I can't. But frankly, those omissions really don't matter, because in the end, this really comes down to two points. And that is, is there a demonstrated mobile need? Nobody is denying that. And two, do we have a way of serving that need with an existing tower? Nobody's denying that. If you take a look at those components and look at it framed around the state statute, 66.0404, I think you have to conclude that the tower is justified. And frankly, as Cityscape stated, the most significant statement from the above is that no existing tower exists within the search area. Cityscape has confirmed this. For this reason, AT&amp;T has demonstrated the need for a new facility in the area and has justified the antenna height of 199 feet with the provided coverage maps depicting the improvements to the provided area. So, obviously, we are trying to satisfy some broadband. In fact, I'll tell you, in that blue area, we've already made broadband available to 252 customers. I just got the update today. We'd like to make that more. And we've built out four existing towers with the capability to provide broadband, fixed wireless. But in order to really serve the area, we need to establish those towers well. So, we've got a documented mobile coverage need. Nobody's disputing that. We don't have a tower within any one of those search rings. That alone should justify approval of it. But on top of that, you can help us benefit those customers in that blue area by this tower. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
Thanks, Jim.
Madam Chair, did we open the floor to a testimony by?
Yeah, Supervisor Alafin specifically asked, and including being followed by Attorney Alafin.
Try not to be limited, but thank you. We do appreciate the opportunity, Madam Chair. And I do want to say that Dane County, your professional planning staff has been very good to work with. They clearly invested a considerable amount of time reviewing the information. Again, we're sorry, we're very sorry for the confusing search rings that were submitted with the initial application. I don't know if Majid could put that back on the slide, but you only have to look at it for about 10 seconds to reach the same conclusion Majid did, which was, I don't get it. Why are you showing a search ring and then a proposed tower location that's not within the search ring? I mean, it just doesn't make sense. So, staff has gone above and beyond in terms of their investigation of all this information. And that's terrific. The only thing I would take exception with is the suggestion that we've somehow fabricated information. There were six points in the staff report from November that we were asked to respond to by the committee. He said, "You better come back here." I think it was January, so we're here in March, a little late, but he said, "You better come back here," having addressed each one of those six points. So, that's what we did in our December 20th supplemental submittal. That's a 15-page, you know, report that Jim put together, trying to explain exactly where the mistakes were made and what they were trying to accomplish. So, we would hope that you accept that as presented, as a truthful explanation of the history of the application and the objectives we're trying to accomplish with the application. And so, we did. We responded to your Supervisor Alafin. You asked, you know, staff, "Did you explain to the applicant what the concerns were?" And in November, there were six, and we've responded to those in writing. And that's in the December 20th submittal. And then, staff was great. They, Majid made himself available to meet with us on a number of occasions, both myself and Jim, following up on what we had submitted, answering additional questions, asking us if we had considered this possibility or that possibility. You heard Jim talk about some of that. And so, Majid also put together this slide for us, and I think he's got that in his pocket as well. But he was saying, you know, for instance, "Help us understand why this tower wouldn't be a better tower. Why can't you guys use that? It's kind of like in the middle of what you're trying to serve." So, Jim went back and talked to his engineers, and the explanation we shared was that the fixed wireless service that we're trying to deliver is not being delivered solely from this one tower, and Majid acknowledged that, that it's part of a network. So, as Jim was explaining, there are actually a number of existing AT&amp;T towers in the area that have already been equipped with the equipment necessary to provide this coverage, and that's why AT&amp;T's already serving 250.
250 living units could have access to it. I don't know how many have actually purchased it, but.
So, this equipment on the other towers that have been equipped is part of that network. And so, you can see them, actually, the exception of this one up here to the north, none of those existing towers to serve this CAF-2 area, within the CAF-2 area. You can see them along the periphery, including this proposed tower over here. And that was the engineering solution that the network engineers designed, first, starting with existing towers to minimize the number of new towers that would be required, and then with this single proposed tower over here. And yes, it's true that this tower won't necessarily serve all of the households up in the town of Dunn, and I think we acknowledge that. But this tower will serve some households in this CAF-2 target area. And so, as Jim said, you know, maybe we've made this a little too complicated for ourselves. There's a well-documented need for additional cellular coverage in the Village of Oregon or in that vicinity. So, getting back to the confusing search rings we provided, that's the one from 2013. And you can see the Rhindell Quarry site is over here, and that was on the western edge of that search ring, when AT&amp;T was saying, you know, "We've got to improve coverage in this area, and so, we're looking for somewhere in here to get a new tower." So, that was 2013. That's where they could find a willing landowner, and that's what they proposed, and it was permitted. And you heard Jim explain the evolution of that, okay? That wasn't possible. Fast forward a couple of years, CAF-2, hey, can we go to the eastern side of this, find a location, build a tower that serves this need and can help us serve the eastern, excuse me, the western edge of our CAF-2 area? So, that's what we did. This site happens to fall within the 2013 search ring. So, if that was the only issue, if we just came back in 2017 and said, "We couldn't build over here, we're still looking for a tower in this area, we'd like a condition use permit for this location to build this tower or this area," I think it'd be pretty straightforward. So, that's kind of where we are. And the reason why those search rings are important is because it's talked about in the state statute. Yeah, it's true that this new state law that's been around for about five years or so does significantly limit what municipalities, local political subdivisions can consider, and does limit the authority to deny towers. I think the legislative intent there is that these towers are necessary, they're often controversial because nobody wants one in their backyard, but they're necessary for the public good. So, there are certain things that can be considered, certain things that can't be considered. One of the requirements is that you have to address co-location. So, you identify an area where you're looking to put a tower, that's your search ring, and then you have to address the issue of co-location. Why do you need a tower in this search ring? And are there any other towers that you could, that exist, that you could put your equipment on? And so, we've done that. We've provided a search ring. There aren't any other towers within that search ring that serve, that would serve this purpose. In addition, we've also looked at, at Majid's urging, other towers that fall outside of this, including the one that's shown on the map there, that's in the middle of the CAF-2 area. You know, could you put stuff there? Would that work? There's another one on 138 that we addressed. So, we have responded to all of the requests that we consider these things, even though the state law says that the local government can't suggest that there's a better site for this. We understand that. We understand that the county still has a role to play, and we have tried our best to respond honestly to every question that's come up. And if I could share with you, I know I don't have time to go through all of this, but we did put together just a written response to the concerns that were in the updated staff report that we got yesterday. So, if you just want to look at, you know, kind of to cut to the chase, on Page Four of my handout here, on the left-hand column, I've got the excerpts from the staff report where it talks about the criteria. And I think that's really what this all comes down to, is what are the standards? What are the criteria for approving these condition use permits? And I had submitted a letter earlier in March, and went through a lot of that stuff in more detail, and listed out the specific criteria. But I just wanted to respond specifically to these issues that were raised in yesterday's staff report, because again, Supervisor Alafin, we did get that, and this is our response to it. So, we do think that we have demonstrated the need for this tower, notwithstanding the fact that that's really not the criteria. The citing law talks about why, you know, asks, "Why have you proposed a tower here?" So, I think we've explained why we proposed a tower here. And then asks, "Are there any other towers, that, existing towers, that you could locate on?" And we think we've addressed that as well. So, we think we've demonstrated compliance with that requirement with respect to the town's comprehensive plan and some of those other elements. There is language in there that talks about the need to accommodate towers. So, simply to say that this is an incompatible use and can't be located here, I don't think does justice to the policy that's embedded in the town's plan about ensuring development of new towers complies with applicable regulations. So, for all of the reasons that we've gone through, we think that this proposed tower does comply with the local regulations and therefore meets the policy goal that's reflected in the town's plan. There's an issue raised about the splits. I mean, acknowledge that that is written into the town's comprehensive plan, and that's certainly guiding, but we don't believe it's controlling or has the force of law here for the town to, in its comprehensive plan, say that placing a tower on an existing property would be a land division. So, we've responded to that. That was also an issue that came up in the November report, which we addressed in December. We did respond to the concerns from the residents. In fact, at Majid's urging, we looked at, as Jim just mentioned, moving the tower further away on the Martinson property, all the way to the eastern edge of the property, down in the southeast corner of the property. But as Jim explained, the elevation change is about 26 feet. So, to get the same coverage, and this is not a real engineering explanation of it, but to get the same coverage, you'd need a taller tower. You'd be over 200 feet, you'd have to be lighted. And so, that presents some objections, we think, to the neighborhood to the west to have a lighted tower there instead of the unlighted tower at 199 feet. So, we did our best to respond to that concern, and we believe that we've submitted an application that complies with the requirements. Certainly, we acknowledge that our concerns about the condition of the Martinson property, I think that's a little outside the scope of our application, and we note that those are subject to county enforcement efforts, and hopefully, that process is seen through. And lastly, there was an objection to the fact that we had not looked at other sites on the Rhindell Quarry, or other potential locations on the Rhindell Quarry site. We did take another look at that, notwithstanding the fact that, again, the state law is, says that the local government can't make you go over here versus over here. We did look at that again, and it would not fulfill the needs we have, as Jim has explained. So, I'm happy to answer questions. I know there's a lot of information that's been thrown at you. We appreciate your time again, and the staff's time as well.
Are there questions for staff or the petitioner?
Majid, did you have a response to this, since there's no information?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I've not had a chance to read or digest the handout.
I just finished typing it at 6:00.
That's all right. I mean, I would, I guess I would ask the committee this question rhetorically perhaps. How much time do you feel you spend on rezoning condition use permit applications that come before you? Maybe that's a question better for Roger. Do you save a lion's share of them or process within a short period of time?
I don't think that's relevant.
Here's why I make this observation, Supervisor Alafin. This application's been lingering around for many, many months. We just entertained the applicant submitting new information, or, you know, we had it going back December, and then meetings, and additional information, and so on. That's not how this process is supposed to go. Our job is to provide you with accurate information and recommendations based on applications that are submitted to our office that we require to meet a certain standard in order, so that they may be reviewed and processed, and we can understand it and make recommendations to you. With the initial application, obviously, that did not occur. The supplemental information, you know, Dan mentioned that he took exception with the staff comment about information being fabricated, and that the December 20th submittal addressed all the issues in the November staff report. But the issue is that it was the December 20th submittal that included the fabrications. There's simply no way to suggest that, and I could read excerpt for excerpt, we go for tit for tat and so on, but that is not what this is, this process is designed to be. You know, we've got folks, and Dan also mentioned, you know, the state law was developed and adopted, you know, because people don't want one of these things in their backyard. That's exactly what they're proposing. We told them from the very beginning, prior to the application even being made, that this was a problematic site because of the land use concerns. You've got folks, you have a submittal, I believe, a written letter from the neighbor there on Mesa Drive concerned about their property values. Those homes represent most people's single most important investment during the course of their lives. And the amount of effort that's gone into this application in chasing down a bad site and, you know, frankly, digging the hole deeper instead of considering alternatives that might be out there, including perhaps designing a broadband system that utilizes existing facilities. We've heard a lot about, well, you know, "We looked at this, and it doesn't work." Well, you've got two objectives. One is broadband in one direction, one is cellular in the other direction. One is broadband in one direction, one is cellular in the other direction. These things don't necessarily intersect in a way that won't result in negative impacts or frankly inadequate service for both objectives. And that's been the concern from the very start, is that they've not, and when we say they've not adequately evaluated the feasibility of co-location, it's for the broadband. Do we get, yeah, there's no tower over here where you need your cellular service. I had, I was out at a meeting in Town of Rutland where they brought this up, which by the way, they forwarded it on to you with no recommendation because it's hard, you know, their process requires that you have a favorable recommendation from the county, the third-party engineer, which obviously they didn't have. At that meeting, was the owner of that quarry site saying, "Hey, I've got alternative sites on here that could work." We asked them, "Why did your engineers give us a search ring based on this guy's property? He's there saying, 'Yeah, let's talk turkey, I'm in.'" "You guys left me hanging with a $3,000 attorney bill, walked away from my site. I'm willing to do business." He showed me a map that AT&amp;T had provided of two alternative locations on his 20-acre parcel that would have been viable. "We're happy to work with investigating those sites." And yes, would that require that they may not be able to meet their broadband objectives? Yeah, you might have to go and put it smack dab in the middle of the service area, and to achieve that at whatever cost that might be. Frankly, you've got federal dollars, taxpayer money for that project. So, what might be expeditious and efficient and least costly for AT&amp;T, receiving federal, you know, money to do it, may not be the best thing in the interest of the community. And that's really what this boils down to, is are we going to allow a company to come in here and plunk a tower down in these people's backyard that doesn't do justice to either of the objectives they're trying to serve, and which we've been trying to tell them for months upon months? This is the tremendous frustration that your staff has had.
I have a question. Could you put the previous slide on, please? The blue, light blue area, is that the federally designated target area?
Yes, correct.
And this location won't serve that area, is that correct?
Well, we've been told, and one of the other things that Mr. Germain had mentioned was that, you know, we wanted an estimate of the number of households that would be served. And he said, "Well, we gave that to you, it's 35 to 40." What he doesn't mention is the next sentence in that report is, and a map depicting the location of them. Like I said, staff had to reverse engineer to figure out, where do you get 35 to 40 households in Town of Dunn from this site, and how far away is that?
What percentage of the households in that light blue area will be served by this location?
By this location, if it's 35 to 40, I don't know from the other sites if they're getting penetration into that area. Again, this is the black box that we have no idea. There might be 250 households they're serving, and there's only a total of 142 in the Town of Dunn portion, a total of 100, or excuse me, 450 throughout everything you see on your map, including a smattering of places there in Dunkirk. But, you know, clearly, there's going to be a significant number of them down in Rutland, but their objectives for this site have been Town of Dunn. So, that's 142, you take, you do the math here, whatever 35 to 40 is as a percentage of the, you know, 142.
It's not a very high percentage.
It's not a very high percentage, about 25% of the total households in.
Can you gentlemen agree with that, that it's not a high percentage of the number of households in light blue area?
Well, I think the thing that's.
Please answer my question. We've been going on here, and to be honest with you, it's been TMI for me. There's so much information that I'm, I don't know how the committee feels, but I'm spinning my wheels on this, and I'm just trying to backtrack and simplify this so I can understand it. But what I'm hearing is a minuscule number of households will be served by that location. Is that correct? That's a yes or no question.
No. I would say it's not a miniscule. I think to those 35 or 40 people, that is an enormous number of people that would not have broadband today if it weren't for that tower.
That wasn't my question, sir. My question was, that light blue area, there's a number of households in it. Your location will serve what percentage of those households?
I don't have the answer to that. What I can tell you is we have four existing towers that were utilized and equipped to serve a portion of that. This tower that we are proposing is part of that overall design. It would have made absolutely no sense to completely ignore those four existing towers and basically say, "We're going to build three or four brand-new ones strategically located around the blue area to serve that." It just wouldn't make any sense. But instead, what we did is we said, "Let's take the existing four, equip those, which we've done." We did that at the end of last year. And then, "Let's see what we need to fill in additional areas." And we determined that at a minimum, we're going to need this tower, we expect we'll probably need one more farther to the east outside of that area.
Oh, that was my question. I was just listening to your presentation earlier. You're going to need another tower.
We are going to need one probably east of Stoughton to, and as this, this map kind of depicts, you can see how the towers are kind of around the area, you know? And so, what I think the tower proposed in the future is going to be down in this southeast corner. So, that's what we need to serve in order to try and maximize this area. And we didn't designate the area. The federal government designated the area. What we said is, "We're going to do our best to build that out." And so, what this tower is doing, the primary purpose of the tower always has been mobile service, and that has not changed. What, what we're trying to do is benefit some of those customers that reside within that blue area, that CAF 2 area, by equipping this tower with the mobile service, the fixed wireless technology.
Supervisor Loughlin?
I'm not a techie. Let me, let me get that on the record.
Sure.
Why haven't these companies, AT&amp;T inclusion, built more powerful transmitters on those poles, so that you don't need four or five in a 50-mile range? Is that a good question?
Yeah, it's a very good question, yeah. And there's a couple of things, and I will be the first one to admit I'm not a techie either. But based on my 31 years of experience with AT&amp;T, what I've come to learn is there's a variety of factors that play into how far we can go with a tower, one of which is the frequency. Some frequencies penetrate a much, much farther distance. When you start to go up in the frequency band, that starts to diminish. So, how far you can go. The other thing is capacity. There's only, only so many channels within the amount of spectrum that we're allocated that you can use for a phone call, for sending emails, texts. And so, if you've got one big tower, and you're going to try and send that signal out everywhere, there's only so much capacity you can get out of it. And that's really one of the reasons why we need at least, you know, five, probably six towers to serve this. You know, it'd be great if we said, "Oh, let's use that tower on Highway 138, it's smack dab in the middle." But one tower won't do it, from a capacity standpoint. And the reason being is, the CAF 2 program has a couple of requirements. One of which is, you've got to give a minimum 10 megabits down to the customers. But even more important is, you have to offer 100 gigabits of monthly data to the, every customer that signs up for your service. And when you start to look at that, that puts an enormous burden on the network itself. And that's why you have to have multiple towers and kind of balance it all together in order to make sure that you provide that, that requirement. That's a federal requirement. We can't just say, "Oh, that's a great guideline, we'll see what we're going to do." Now, what we've done is, with our service, we're actually taking that higher. We're going to go to 160 gigabits is our service for a customer on a monthly basis. So, they get a lot more ability to watch movies, you know, do email, surf the web, do whatever they want. But to do that, we can't do it with one tower, as much as we'd love to. Heck, why wouldn't we want to do that? It would save us a ton of money if we only had to equip one tower to make this work. We've had to equip four of them. It's very expensive to equip those towers, and building a new one, that's extremely expensive. You're talking probably at least a half a million dollar, or, yeah, half a million dollars. So, it, it doesn't make sense for us to, to, you know, try and just put them up willy-nilly.
Two, two quick questions.
Sure.
You build a tower today where you propose, and it helps four people, is that correct? Today, that are there living in that area, it'll help four or five people, is that the number?
No, no, no. We said 35 to 40 for broadband, and then it helps all of the people in the area for mobile service coverage. Plus, plus your first net, so you're providing service to first responders in the area, Town of Rutland, all those.
All right. Have you ever put a tower in where you've only served at the onset of that tower's operation, 35 or 40?
Not if that was the sole purpose of the tower, I, no. But that's not the sole purpose of the tower. The primary purpose of the tower is mobile's coverage, and that, Cityscape acknowledged, they said that need is there, and the county, you know, you folks, agreed with that back in 2013. That need is there, that's the primary purpose of the tower, and that's the primary reason. Now, yes, we did want to try and get it a little bit farther east. It's still within that original search ring that you approved, but we did want to try and get it a little further east to try and help those broadband customers.
Why can't you go to the east?
I'm sorry?
Why can't you get it a little further east?
Well, if you go too far east, there is a tower, existing tower on Highway 80, that's about a mile away, I want to say, 1.3 miles away. Yeah, you can see it's right next to, it's hidden by the Highway 8. We took a look at that, and there's a couple deficiencies with that, one of which is a shorter tower. And where we can co-locate on that is lower. I think it's 180 feet, where we're proposing 195. And so, that starts to impact that, that mobile coverage need that we have around the Town of Oregon, Highway 14, all that stuff. So, yeah, we took a look at trying to go farther east, and you can't go too far east because then it starts to mess with those existing four towers that you're using for the broadband.
Okay. So, the 180 foot, you need 195.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you contract with the owner of that tower and put an extension up to 200 feet?
Well, I think we'd probably have to go much taller than, than that, because that's farther east. So, right now, we're proposing being a mile and a quarter, I think it is, west, 195 feet will provide.
Okay, but if you go east, it'll have to be more than that.
Yeah, maybe 250, you know, and that, now you start to get into, you know, that's a monopole there. Monopoles are really limited to about 200 feet. Going beyond that, you've got to go a lattice, so now you're tearing down the tower and basically rebuilding it. So, yeah, you know, and I totally get it, you know? I totally get that people don't want these things in their backyard, but I can probably guarantee you that every single household has a cell phone in their possession. Everybody wants mobile communication, they just don't want the towers. And we try and balance that, and we don't want to just put these things up, you know, for the heck of it. You know, they're extremely expensive, and that's why we really try and pick locations that will serve the most benefit possible. And that's why we really do believe that this site is indeed the best one available to us.
Would you agree?
Excuse me?
What I was just going to ask, is the, is the attorney for the citizens who opposed the hiring?
I don't believe they had an attorney.
Oh, okay. I just thought that might be, because otherwise, I was thinking that if so, we should.
We don't have any registrants.
All right. Let's sit by your line and read the discussion.
Did you have any things?
Yeah, one more.
Go ahead.
The data that is in this report that was just handed out, we have staff report, and then we have AT&amp;T response. Like I said, I'm not a techie, but how can anybody approve anything, anything from this group with these kind of differentials that are existing right now? I mean, are we, I mean, imagine somebody looking at this 20 years from now saying, "Well, you approved something for a company when you have a staff report on the left-hand side, and you've got the AT&amp;T response on the right-hand side, and they're not even in the same ballpark."
I think that's a very good question, and that's why in my comments, I tried to boil it down to really two things. And to me, those are probably the most important. Forget about the benefit we're trying to give those, those CAF 2 customers. I'm sure the customers wouldn't want me to say that, but let's take a look at the two things that I think are really most important. Is there a demonstrated mobile coverage need, and is there a tower that can serve that need?
The answer's yes, and the answer's no.
Exactly. Then you have your answer as to how to proceed.
Go ahead.
You know, I.
I think there is a one extremely important item here that everybody's rushing to decide, and it doesn't have to be technical or anything. It's the simple Town of Rutland Comprehensive Plan. It's, Town of Rutland participates in the Act Preservation Program. The landowners receive tax credits in regards to limiting their development on their property. The Martinson property has exhausted their housing density rights, or their development rights, and this is just like one extra. And I think that was important, really, that's what captured my attention, the simplicity of the town comprehensive plan limiting development areas.
So, what are you saying?
Basically, the development rights are exhausted on the Martinson property, and the Town of Rutland counts development such as communication towers as development rights, and there, there's none there.
So, they said no.
They didn't say anything.
They didn't say, they said, "No opinion."
No.
Right, and they say, "No opinion." Yeah.
Go ahead, Majid.
Supervisor Loughlin, you mentioned, you made a good point about, well, what about going further to the east? And the response we heard was, "Well, yeah, there's a tower over there on A, and maybe that could be used, but then, well, it doesn't suit what we need for the, for the cellular service to the west." And this is the crux of the issue. You don't necessarily need one site to serve both objectives, and in this case, it's doing justice to neither of them. They could, we have Mr. Rhindall, who's been following, asking me for follow-ups, saying, "Hey, you know, I had a tower site here." I've been telling the folks from SAC Wireless this from the minute I got a phone call back in, God, I want to say it was May of 2016, maybe even earlier. "Hey, there's an approved site already there in Town of Oregon, why don't you look at that?" "Well, we've got soil problems, 20-acre site, maybe there's other alternatives on there." Mr. Rhindall says, "There certainly is, AT&amp;T even looked at them, but they didn't, you know, choose to pursue it." They gave us this ring centered on his site. I asked the engineers during our phone call, "Was that valid at all?"
The circle you're.
The circle. Was it valid? I did not get a response. And the December 20th stuff, and I apologize because I agree with you, Jerry, this is TMI. This is the stuff that we work out behind the scenes, so it doesn't get all messy here in front of you, but such is life, this is where we are. This is what they handed us. We've got a willing landlord right smack in the middle. The engineer, when I said, "Well, you know what, this guy's interested," he said, "Well, maybe he wasn't home the day we stopped by to ask." So, now we have to entertain a site that's in someone's backyard and against their wishes, and then a site that's not going to achieve both objectives, that requires the tower to be taller. The tower they had on the Rhindall property was about, I think, 150, maybe improved up to 170 feet. That County A tower, maybe it's a better site for the, for the broadband. But all the analysis comes back to, it's like co-location isn't even an option. We're not going to put our stuff on their tower, we don't want to pay them. Are we providing the service or not? I mean, this is the, like I said, this is the problem we've had with this and why we said that it's a refusal to evaluate co-location. And that is one of the parameters under which the county can deny, under the state law, a mobile tower. This tower is not just a mobile tower, it is also to provide fixed wireless. We feel frankly that it doesn't fall under the limitations of the, of the statute. At the end of the day, we would love to facilitate a proposal that met their objectives, we have no beef with that whatsoever. They chose a poor site that doesn't do justice to either of the objectives that they've identified, this is what our engineers have said, we've got neighbors against it, as Roger pointed out, we've got a site that's got a history of zoning. it. As Roger pointed out, we've got a site that's got a history of zoning violations. The property itself, or neighboring property, this property is out of splits.
Okay.
It's-
Thank you. Mr. Germain, I keep hearing about this other, about other potential sites. Would you like to address that?
I'm sorry.
Other potential sites. Once again, we've just heard that there's a different potential site. We have a seller that's willing.
Right, right. We did, we took a look at a variety of different sites, one of which is the Reindahl Stone, which is the original site that was deemed to be unsuitable for soil conditions. So it wasn't that AT&amp;T just walked away as it was, you know, suggested and left them hanging with $3,000 debt. It was determined that the site was not suitable. Now, we've heard subsequently that they have 20 acres and they'd love to have the tower on our site. And our engineers took a look at that. And what we found was that that will not meet the needs of the CAF II area. So, yeah, it is a balance. There's no doubt about it. But I think when Mr. Allen suggested that this site does not do justice to either, I would take exception with that. In fact, your consultant in their September report said that this should be approved because there is a demonstrated need. And this tower serves that need. So I, I think I have a little problem with this notion that the site will not meet the wireless coverage needs. It will do that. And a, this county's own consultant has, has determined that. So, you know, I, I guess we come back to, you know, we, we really, as I mentioned early on, this really comes back to two questions. You know, is there a demonstrated need? Nobody's denying that. And is this, is there an alternative within, existing alternative within that ring? And the answer is no. You know, I, I think, and I think Dan, the question came up about the Town's Comprehensive Plan. Can you maybe just briefly speak to that? Because I think that was a concern that was raised.
Yeah, that was raised in the November staff report. We did address that in our December 20th submittal. I don't know if anybody has that handy amongst all of the TMI on your desk. But there's an entire page that we devoted to discussing that issue and the Town's Comprehensive Plan and our response to it. Our position simply is that, yes, the town does express that preference in its comprehensive plan. And that is certainly guiding on your decision-making, but not controlling. Obviously, that has the force of law. And notwithstanding that, it also stands in contradiction to the siting law, which says that the local government can have policies or ordinances, rules in place that would rule out siting towers in particular areas within the town. So we think that density policy would run afoul of the siting law.
Okay.
And I think anything at this, you know, further at this point from us would be argumentative.
Okay. Right. Any other questions from supervisors on the petition?
Are we ready for a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's denied. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, one, one item. Shall we introduce that?
Yes, if you would please introduce.
Yes, we need the motion to introduce their comments.
Moved.
Second.
Second to introduce, include in the record, the AT&amp;T response to the staff report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Get that into the record. Arrington Tree Farm?
Yeah, we're still waiting on paperwork for a waiver on the, waiver from the frontage requirement of, they're, they're vacating.
They're not here.
Okay. They're not here. It's going to be on April.
Thank you. We have a motion to postpone? And second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's postponed. Seeing none. And Platts?
Welcome home, Town of Middleton. This is before you for a signature, execution of a plat, subject to the conditions that were approved on August 22nd.
I'm making a motion to approve with the conditions.
All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved.
And then the last one is a final plat located in the city of Middleton. This is before you for certification, not objection. This consists of six lots, a little over one acre. There's no parkland shown. You have, as far as a major corridor, you have a University Avenue to the south. And there are arrows indicating the direction of drainage flows during the construction in regards to the groundwater.
Make a motion, we do not object.
We have a motion and a second for certification, not objection. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And certified. Certified survey maps?
Yeah, there is a whole lot to report, but it's, it should be in your package. It wasn't even signed in court.
We're good?
Good. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you for hanging in there.